So I'd like to call the meeting of the January 11th, 2016 Board of Education meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is the review and approval of our agenda. If you note in the action items, there are two new items from what was given to you in your Friday notes. The high school donation and the Saks Middle School donation. So just, those are the only additions to the agenda. If you've, when you've had a chance, can you, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes as noted.
Thank you Hazel. And a second? Sherri? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay. Moving on, you have in your packet, the minutes from our December 7th and December 14th budget workshop. Could, if you could take a second to review those and after you've had a chance, if someone could give me a motion to approve. Can I do both at the same time? Or do I have to do them individually?
Do them one at a time.
Okay. So let's do the December 1st, uh, December 7th, sorry. Could I have a motion to approve December? Sherri?
Motion to approve the minutes.
And Hazel? Second. All those in favor? Okay. Any opposed? Okay. Okay. So every, thank you. And if you could take a look at your December 14th budget workshop minutes. Have a motion to approve those minutes? Sangita?
Motion approved.
Second? Jen? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Upsteing?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So moving on to the comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone who'd like to speak? Seeing none, I'd like to move on to the action items. And first item on the action items is the New Canaan High School donation. Dr. Lettsi.
Yes. The high school PFA has put together a beautification committee who has been working hard to develop plans to improve the la, the high school and the, both kind of the looks by some of the work they're doing and some, they're looking at adding some bike racks and other things like that. This committee is working very, very hard and doing really great work. So they have, the PFA would like to donate to the system $5,500 to be used for projects such as coil bike racks, new benches and planters and things that would go in the front of the school. They're really working hard to do what they can to make New Canaan High School look as good as possible. So, very impressive work. They're very dedicated and very excited about their work actually. And they, this is their first step in these efforts as a beautification committee.
Do I have any questions or comments? Hazel?
I just wanted to say thank you to them for being so thoughtful to do this for us and especially for all of the students to be able to enjoy this and be able to see it. So can I say a motion simultaneously?
Sure.
I'd like to move that we accept this donation, if that's part of the protocol?
Yes.
That's fine. Do I have a second? Penny? Any other discussion? Okay. Can I have a vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Okay. Moving on to the Saks Middle School donation.
Yep. And just before we move on, I just want to mention the banners in the front of the school. You might have recog, noticed them in the last couple of days. That was one of the donations from the PFA towards the beautification effort and the work that they're doing. So I think it already is yielding results. It really looks great. I've gotten a lot of very positive feedback about the, you know, the pot, the feel that it gives to the.
And were those lovely new shrubs in front as well, part of that project? I saw someone, in front of the high school. There's all kinds.
Well, yes. The garden that's been all cleaned out?
Yep.
Absolutely. Yep. The, there's a garden in the front, but over time, you know, if you don't weed these things, they get overgrown, whatever. So the PFA worked hard to, to clean all of that up and really make it look good. So, they're doing great things. This next action item is a Saks Middle School donation. Again, came to us this morning and it's from the PTC there. They are looking to donate $21,327.99 for the purchase of 20 MacBook Airs to be used at the school. Specifically, it would be for the VPA department, I believe, and the technology department. Clint is doing great work over there with groups of students and during and after school. And I think these MacBook Airs are meant to help him in that work and some of the other work that we're doing. So, the PTC would like to generously donate $21,327.99.
Okay. Do I have any questions or comments? If not, then I may have a motion to approve the donation. Brandon? May I have a second? Sangita? All those in favor? Okay. Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And we're moving on to the first read of the superintendent's budget. Dr. Lettsi.
I'm going to go around to the podium.
The, the first thing I'm going to do is put my phone on airplane mode. So that I don't receive any texts and I don't lose track of time with the Clemson game tonight. You're welcome to follow along if you would be getting texts from your, your friends or family or others as well. But please poker faces all around would be very appreciated on my part. So, the, as I begin, I just want to say, "Go Tigers." And then we'll get into the budget. The, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to share the budget with you tonight as we work our way through. You know, I was, I was joking that this could be the quickest budget presentation in history, but I think as you see the packets in front of you, you're, you're seeing that perhaps it will not be. You should have two packets in front of you. One is landscape and the other is portrait. The presentation that I'll be going through tonight is the landscape printout. The portrait printout is your budget document that you will be, will be using and referring to later on tonight and also in follow-up meetings and conversations that we'll be having. The, again, the landscape copy is the sort of slide-by-slide for you to follow along if you like, but the budget itself is in portrait and that's the, the official document that we'll be referring to and using in the future. For anyone who is interested, the presentation is available on our website. If they go to the ncps-k12.org website, there's a quick link on the left that says budget. They should be able to go to the budget page and you'll see the superintendent's proposed budget presentation. And that should have each one of the slides, you know, as we go through tonight. We're also working, I think Susan is currently working while we're here, in putting up the entire budget document, to have that document online as well. Due to its size, it's about 100 pages. She's working to get it online in a user-friendly way so that people can read it, follow along, and learn from it accordingly. Okay? So I welcome anyone who's not here to follow along online if they like, or follow along by watching the TV. Okay. So, as we develop the budget this year, once again, we considered it a blueprint for resourcing the district's mission and goals. It's been developed with a focus on our responsibility to continue excelling in pursuit of our mission on behalf of the children in our care every day. And in support of the families and stakeholders who place their trust in us as we work with those students. The New Canaan Public Schools continues to receive recognition regionally, statewide, and nationally as a premier district. And our commitment, represented in the budget that we're sharing with you tonight, is to continue providing an outstanding educational experience for all of our students as they prepare for the dynamic and exciting future they have ahead. Education is an incredibly complex endeavor. And our success as a district is characterized by our performance on a macro level such as district and school-wide measures and on a micro level, as evidenced by grade level, class, and individual student successes. Overseeing it all is an outstanding Board of Education, whose guidance, insight, and leadership has a direct impact on the quality of our schools. Wherever that went, there we go. We're incredibly fortunate to have such knowledgeable and dedicated board members, working tirelessly on behalf of our students. And at the operational level, we're equally fortunate to have passionate and dedicated district leadership team headed by the individuals you see here, both at the table and in the As we begin our budget discussion this evening, I want to express a very special and heartfelt thank you to Dr. Keating and Ms. Haberman for their truly outstanding work in putting this year's budget together. Although they're both new to our system, their incredible knowledge, skill, dedication, and focus has helped us to develop what I believe to be the most complete, detailed, and user-friendly budget document that we've ever produced. As you'll see tonight, the entire district-wide leadership team, led by Joanne and Tracy throughout the process, has developed a budget that meets the demands of our budget drivers while thoughtfully and purposefully investing in appropriate and high-leverage improvement efforts. Of course, it's, it's important also to take a moment to recognize the district, the building level administrators are with us tonight. Our building principals are here, along with Alan Lizette is coming, and Matt are district administrators. Of course, the cabinet members are here. And Tracy, have you been introduced to the board?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Our budget director, Tracy's here as well. The, putting a budget together is, is a team effort. And the, the whole team across the public schools, from the building level to the central office level, everyone involved really worked very, very well together in putting it, in getting, in building this budget that you're going to see tonight. So I want to publicly thank everyone involved for your incredible efforts and the admirable passion you continue to show for all of our work together. So you've seen the budget calendar before, but no presentation about budget would be complete without sharing it just one more time. There's one slight change to the calendar I did want to share with you. On January 20th, we will be sharing our budget with the Board of Selectmen. That's a nine o'clock meeting start time, but we will not be there before 10 o'clock. So I just wanted to make that little, that little change. The reason for that is I'll be speaking with the combined high school and Saks, PTC, PFA groups to share with them a budget overview first thing that morning. And then I'll be going from there to the Board of Selectmen to do the same. So Rob Malazi, Tom Stidler graciously agreed to put us last on their agenda that morning so that, so I could do both. So that's a 10 o'clock change. Otherwise, the dates so far, as we know them, are right here, are right there. While it seems like quite a few meetings, each one of them is an opportunity for us to share with the community our values, beliefs about learning as are reflected in this document. It also gives us a great opportunity to share with the community some of the great things that we're doing as a district, some of the results of those investments that they've made in our schools over time. And also to share with them some of the excitement that we feel about where we're going in the work that we're doing, how we'll translate for our students today and tomorrow and into the future. So we have quite a few meetings. We'll have many discussions, I'm sure, but each one is an opportunity for us to put our best foot forward, to show the boards, the community, others, what wonderful work we're doing in our schools. As I mentioned earlier, our success as a district is characterized by both breadth and depth, large scale and on an individual basis. We continue to be extremely proud of the preponderance of evidence that shows an extraordinary return on investment delivered to the community in the short term and the long term. And we're grateful for the vision, commitment, and support that creates the conditions where our students and educators can consistently grow and achieve at the very highest levels. With this in mind, the budget we'll be discussing tonight contains several primary themes related to both budget drivers and program improvements. The first budget driver, which we'll review again tonight, is our district enrollment pattern. As the, as the board has reminded us, the district class-size guidelines provide a framework for our staffing levels and our needs. As over 80% of the budget is invested in salaries and benefits for our over 700 faculty and staff, this is clearly the most significant budget driver and one that we work tirelessly to understand so as to best leverage all available resources. Our newly implemented in-house payroll system provides greater forecasting accuracy in budget development and position control, which helps us to present the great detail that you'll see in tonight's presentation and in the budget book that you have in front of you. Other budget drivers we'll be discussing tonight that we're working very hard to accurately and appropriately fund include health insurance, outplacement costs, fuel costs, electricity costs, transportation, others that we'll discuss for sort of those budget movers and drivers as we look at it. So a theme is to respond to demographic changes. Another is to accurately and appropriately fund budget drivers to ensure long-term sustainability. Because it's not all, it's not about just next year, right? The decisions we make today don't only impact us into next year. The decisions we'll make as this budget goes through the process impact us, our school district, our children, our programs, next year and in the years ahead. So we want to think in terms of short term and long term. And with those things specifically, we talk about budget drivers as we have some conversation about insurance, the, the costs associated therein, and developing sort of longer-range plans in order to appropriately and sustainably fund those things. While our budget drivers tend to be large numbers that comprise a significant majority of the district budget, some of the most exciting work comes from our program improvements and enhancements, which have a direct impact on the experience of our students and all of our stakeholders. Aligned with our budget assumptions and goals, this budget invests in several higher, high-leverage areas designed to improve and enhance our building and our district programs. As the research consistently shows, the single most important factor in student success is the quality of classroom instruction. And in this budget, we've ensured that these strategic priorities are adequately and appropriately funded to empower our schools to continuously improve. As you're well aware, in the district goals, goal number five is focused on stewardship of resources. Some of the most valuable resources that we have include our building, our facilities. So one of the themes you'll see in this bill, in this budget, is responsible stewardship of district facilities. And responsible stewardship doesn't mean leaving a problem where it is and hoping it doesn't evolve into something worse. Responsible stewardship means identifying areas that are high-risk as far, in our facilities and developing plans to address them before they become critical needs. You'll see in the, as we get into the capital discussion, that Bob, Joanne have worked hard to look through our five-year capital plan, identify items to be accelerated due to the critical nature of those items, identify areas that could possibly be deferred for other, for logical reasons, and others that just need to stay on schedule as they are. And we've identified those and pulled those out so that it's very clear what those decisions, why those decisions have been made. Additionally, in the last few years, we've focused very specifically on student safety. We've developed our program of campus monitors and taken other steps in all of our buildings and with our personnel as far as training goes, communication, work with our community, work with our public safety groups, our police, our fire, other groups. And that ma, that continues to be a high priority, one of the highest priorities for our school district and in our budget. So we continue to fund and support our campus monitor system, continue to work with training and development of our campus safety protocols. Technology has been a significant focus for our district through the, through the years. And in this budget, in this budget, we continue to purposely leverage our district's investments in technology in order to improve educational effectiveness in the classroom, staff efficiency out of the classroom, and our district communications. So having identified the primary themes of this year's budget, at this point, it's important to take a moment to look at our current performance before discussing our future planning. Our sustained focused, focus and commitment on our district goals has provided a consistent roadmap for our success and is our guide throughout the budget development process. Our goals are consistent and stable, which means that they result in aligned and consistent action. And we, and we've seen consistently strong outcomes as a result of these efforts. I heard a quote recently that resonated with me, especially given our work in schools. You'll see it, you see it on the bottom of the page there. The, this idea that, the challenge with the present is that the future keeps changing. The future is complex, dynamic, unpredictable, which could make any thoughtful educator suffer from panic attacks, as we consider our responsibility to prepare our students to be successful in that future. But our district takes a thoughtful approach to all that we do, which empowers us to keep our compass pointed to, through, to, true north at all times, instead of being buffeted about by the external forces and demands that come at us every day. We focus on teaching our students the knowledge and skills they will need to be successful in this uncertain future. And we do so by developing, implementing, and assessing a relevant and rigorous curriculum with excellent educational professionals and a system that honors continuous learning District-wide, we've received a great many honors for the wonderful success of our, of our students. As a Board of Education, I know you're well aware of many of these honors. The, recently, there was a rating from an online website, niche.com, which rated the New Canaan Public Schools 16th in the country. Of course, I think we're better than that, but it was, it's a nice honor and a nice recognition again of the wonderful work that's, that's going on in our schools. The, again, as a Board of Education, I'm not going to spend an awful lot of time here because I think that you understand and see the return on this good work that we do. The, I think one of the most impressive elements of all of this is that it's not in, in one pocket. It's not in one school, not in one place, in one grade. But what you see is systemic excellence that really goes across all five of our schools. Our student outcomes place us among the most elite schools in the country. And our district efforts to align the work, the curriculum efforts that happen, the instructional practices that continue to improve through our Tepel system and others, keep us among the very best, at the very top of our, our performance. Of course, an educational experience is more than that, right? As students go through our educational program, they learn the academic, they learn the curriculum, and they learn to be, the skills that they'll need to be successful in the world. The, but I do believe it's just, it's impressive to consider the, the consistent, sustained accolades that don't, that come across the entire district and all five of our schools. Again, I think it speaks to the, the incredible efforts of the people at all of our buildings and the work on the curriculum, the focus on instructional practices, and the continuous learning around assessment that really informs our work. Looking specifically at the high school, last year I presented these data as a quick snapshot of our performance and I thought it appropriate to just, to put them up there once again to show the two-year trend around these. You'll see that we've had very strong results on a variety of measures. These are many of the most significant measures that you would use to look at a high school. And we look at a hi, at the high school because that is sort of the culmination of effort K-12. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't only celebrate the success of the grades nine through 12, but it really, this is to talk about everything that happens kindergarten right all the way through. I think one of the more impressive stats is the, the percentage of our students that are accepted into their first choice of college. You know, are, to be at about two-thirds of our students accepted into their, their proclaimed first choice going in. And then for 34% of our students to be attending what Barron's considers to be the most competitive schools, I think really speaks to our preparation for, of our students as they consider and approach their future. And then if, as all of you who are a part of our back-to-school morning with the graduates from last year know, they come back feeling very good about the preparation, feeling that their hard work in high school truly paid off in their work in college and that they were well-prepared, that they're able to, they have the right habits, habits of mind, habits of practice in order to be successful there. So I think it speaks volumes to the good work we're doing. Again, this is a K-12 look based on the outcomes of our students. We've been looking to increase the number of us, of students participating in our AP program, as you know. So you see a significant jump there in AP participation from 318 to 360, which is a very strong number. That jump helped us to earn our, a place on the sixth annual Advanced Placement District Honor Roll. And I like that it's, they call it a district honor roll instead of a high school honor roll because again, it celebrates all of the work that happens K-12. But that, that recognition is significant in that it celebrates school districts who have increased participation while maintaining high standards of performance. So while we went from 318 to 360 students participating, as you can see, our percentage of students scoring a three or better is statistically the same. So we're providing more students the opportunity to be involved with the program and our results are remaining consistently high, which again, is a powerful statement of the, the strength of our program, the quality of the instructional practice, and the great, great work that our students are doing. Another recognition I just would like to mention briefly is the CAE, which is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, recognition to all of you last year for your educational communications of the district budget. Several, this Board of Education has been focused through the Board of Ed Communications Subcommittee and everyone's efforts on clearly communicating the budget to the community through the website, through email blasts, and in other ways. Specifically, I think this speaks to the efforts that you put in for the budget quicknotes last year and for, and some of the email communications and other things that the board did. So I wanted to just mention this as a quick little congratulations. You get some awards as well. And as you'll see tonight, I think it's also a testament to the board and to the district that we continue to work hard to get better and better. So in our budget communications, you'll see this document that's in front of you even more clearly communicates the different elements of the budget. So, our challenge is always to continue meeting our obligations, the community's high expectations of sustained excellence, with a focus on continuous improvement. All of that while simultaneously meeting the community's expressed need for a low overall budgetary increase. So it creates a challenging environment as we look to put our, put these things together. So there's several core concepts. The, as we get into the numbers in a minute or two, you'll see that on number four, a significant portion of the proposed budget is funding insurance costs. Yet, with those budget drivers, and we need to address those budget drivers as we go, what we didn't allow to happen was for those to overshadow the program improvements and the other work that we need to do in support of curriculum, instruction, and assessment that directly translates to our students' experience in the classroom. You know, our funding, funding of insurance doesn't necessarily directly impact that student's experience, but it's something we have to do. Our, our investment on instructional materials, textbooks, curriculum supplies, professional learning, coaching, teacher evaluation, those investments directly translate to the classroom, but they're not nearly of the same, same amount as the, as something like the insurance number. So does, because they're not as much money, doesn't mean they're less important. And so that's when we talk about identifying our high-leverage points and, and funding our strategic priorities, that's what we're talking about. So we worked very hard to continue, to make sure that we did that. So, thinking about programs and budget drivers, with a focus on sustaining excellence and still working to improve our results, you'll see programmatically, one of the proposals in superintendent's budget is a reorganization of our special education building leadership structure. You'll see investments in curriculum materials, investments in things focused on improving instructional practice. Of course, technology is a cornerstone of the great work that we're doing today. And then also budget drivers. You see them listed there. So as we jump into the numbers, I think it's very important to keep in mind what they ultimately represent. They represent the collective commitment of all members of the New Canaan Educational Community to provide a premier education that serves all students and the greater New Canaan community in powerful, meaning, and lasting ways. We are passionately dedicated to preparing all students to excel in a dynamic and exciting future. That is a great charge, something. That is a great charge, something that's very exciting to do every day, and that's been our focus. It's easy for someone who's not as involved with a budget in education as you or the people in the room to look at a budget and think of it just as money, right, just as financing. But a budget is much, much more than that. A budget should reflect our educational philosophy, our district mission, vision, and beliefs about learning. It's a statement of New Canaan's values and priorities to all of its stakeholders. It is a financial document, but how the finances are appropriated within the budget shows what we value and hold dear as a district. So as you look at this and get into the numbers now, I think it's just important to consider where those priorities lie. So we'll dive in. So these pages that look like this and have all the numbers on them are essentially copies and pastes out of the larger budget document. I thought it would be best to be able to show them and sort of talk to them here, and then as we get into the finer details, we'll use the budget document as our primary source. Does that make sense? Will that work? Okay. As we get into the budget and start to look at lots of numbers on the screen, I do want to spend a minute just sharing with you the difference between the 2016 budgeted column and the 2016 projected column. So as we've mentioned for about a year now, the greatest benefit of moving payroll in-house is that it created a system of position control. When we began the budget development for FY '17, we realized that we couldn't develop a highly accurate 2017 proposal without first sort of reversing into the 2016 salaries using that position control system. Once we figured that out, Joanne, Tracy, and their staff spent inordinate amounts of time, incredible amounts of time, going person by person, looking at each person's salary, comparing it against the grid and whatever bargaining unit they may be, looking at stipends, looking at longevity payments, looking at every sort of piece that may come in, some of their mileage, payments, other pieces that go into each of the salaries, and identifying them, making sure they're correct, coding them individually, making decisions about all of those, and verifying each entry into the system manually. It was an enormous effort, but the results of those efforts are the clear and reliable budget presentation that you'll see. Since we didn't have position control when we developed the budget and we hadn't had it up till this point, it's the first time that we're able to look at the 2016 projected and the 2016 budget. So if you remember, I think at the Budget Workshop, Joanne was talking about truing up the budget, that the projected is that true-up of the budget. And so when we look at dollar or percentage difference to the budget, we're actually looking at the difference to the projected budget, the trued-up part, not to the budgeted part. Because as you also know, a budget is an itemized estimate of costs. We do our best to be as accurate as we can be. But now with the position control system, it allows us to much more accurately manage the 80%, 82%, which is salaries and benefits, and very specifically manage about 64% or so that makes up just those salaries. So we are looking at the difference of budgets, when we look to make the comparisons, we're looking at the projected numbers as we do that. I mentioned that about 62% of the budget is salaries and about 19 or so percent is the benefits. So we're over 80% salaries and benefits, which is common in a school district because education is a people business. The people around us, the work that they do, the exchange between the teacher and the student in the classroom every day is our core mission. So you would hope and expect that the significant bulk of your expenditures go towards that core mission and that core work. Beyond that, we look at contracted property and purchased services, equipment and other revenue, and supplies make up the difference there. And I'm not purposely going fast for the game tonight, so you're welcome to stop me if you like, but I'm going to keep going. Okay. So what we've done before, last year and the years passed, and what we'll do again tonight is kind of look object by object. But one of the true, I think, values and strengths of the budget document that you have, it has that summary, but then it also goes into program by program. Tonight, as we go through this higher-level overview, I'll be talking about district numbers and trends on an object level. In the time between now and January 25th, when we have the second reading of the budget, I think that gives you an opportunity to go through the program-by-program cost center, as we call them, by cost center, it's any area of the district that has its own budget, and use that document to sort of refine and understand. And then as we come together on the 25th for our discussion, I think we'll be able to have that discussion using that document. So I hope that works for you. The total district salaries, there's an increase of $959,887 from budgeted salaries. And this is the value of that position control work. It's $2.413 million difference between the projected and the proposed. So why is that? Well, we are looking at our enrollment, and we are looking at the class size guidelines, and we are putting them together, and we are making decisions based upon those things. You'll see that we've made a few other decisions as well around that for some moderation of the FTEs, and I'll get into some of the rationale behind that. We are looking at that reorganization of building special education program leadership, as I mentioned. And of course, we have contractual increases with our bargaining units, that one of which is still in negotiations and the others are moving forward into next year. And as you know, we had our arbitrated teacher award just in the last couple of months. So the main driver around salaries, of course, is enrollment. So I just thought we'd take a brief moment to look at the enrollment. And I know we've done this a few times, so I don't want to take any more time than we need to. But it is true, you can only understand personnel costs really by looking at enrollment and trends. As you know, we report our enrollment numbers on October 1st of each year, and I used those numbers because it's the only true way to get a year-to-year comparison. The district, actually, on July 1, we increased district-wide by another 30 students. So it's interesting, which, January, what did I say? Did I say July 1? I'm sorry, I'm tired already. January 1, we started 2016 with 30 more students than we ended 2015, which, interesting, you know, as we look at it and the distribution, you know, may point towards accuracy for our demographer. But the, as you may recall from Gary's presentation back in October, variability can occur within each grade, but NASDAQ's enrollment projections this year were accurate to 99.4%. Despite the accuracy, though, there is, again, that fluctuation sometimes between grade levels and, of course, across the elementary schools. But if you look at, just, these are the aggregate elementary school enrollment numbers historically and going forward, and you see that jump going into next year, which is in part attributed to a large anticipated kindergarten class coming in. But we know kindergarten is also the most difficult to predict, but as we look at it, those numbers are high. As we look at the middle school, as we've been discussing, the enrollment trend at the middle school continues to be upward and leveling off at a higher amount above 1,300. And as we look at the high school, as you would anticipate, it essentially will mirror the middle school four years later. And there's some coming and going, of course, but it pretty closely mirrors those numbers. Currently, on October 1, we're at 1,251 at the high school, and next year we're anticipated to go to 1,271. Our senior class is a smaller class, and that's graduating out, and our junior class is a little bit bigger. So and that's important, not just for staffing, but when we get into instructional supplies and the need for more textbooks, we're seeing, because the smaller senior class is leaving and the number of AP classes that we have available to our seniors, there's some demand for increased textbooks there as well. So on a district-wide basis, again, we pulled together the other three, and we see our district-wide basis, we are, again, projected at this point to be going up and to be maintaining at a relatively high rate. Now, I just want to very, very briefly address, there's an enrollment study that was published by CAE, and we looked at that and found that the data used in that enrollment study is a few years old. And because it's a few years old and it takes a five-year backwards look, it includes in those forecasts enrollment data around 2008, 2009, 2010. And as we know, enrollments in all school districts were decreasing at that point as people were not in great shape financially. So those projections compared against these projections don't show the same numbers, but these projections are based on the most recent data available to us. We share that data with our demographer. He sometimes will come back and ask some clarifying questions. We share with him everything we have that comes right out of our student system, our student information system, which is some of the, so it's very well-vetted information because every student in that system is a body in our school, right? So if a teacher gets a class list with 20 students and only 19 students come to class, that teacher then communicates to the attendance office, who then communicates to the house, figures out, have they moved, are they sick, are they not coming? And in the first couple of weeks of school, those lists are cleaned up and the enrollment is verified. That's why we don't go with, say, a September 1 date for reporting of our enrollment, because at that point, we may still be cleaning up and some of our classrooms not know, not be able to reach parents, whatever it might be. By reporting out October 1, it gives school districts the opportunity to go through that verification process where each teacher in the elementary, middle, and high school, looking at their class lists, looking at their students, reporting out anybody who may not be there, and we have that opportunity to clean that up. So the numbers that we report on October 1, we've gone through that process, and they're the most accurate numbers that we have. We do also report to the state at a couple of other times throughout the course of the year, twice, I think, once in the winter and once in the spring. So there's also that trend data that's available for, you know, for demographers and others to be able to pull together these projections. Excuse me. Okay. So with the position control system that we have, Joanne was able to go in and to develop enrollment and staffing plan and report, which is a highly detailed look at all of the people that make up each of our buildings and each of our areas. I didn't include all of them in here, but I did include the schools because it also shows the enrollment piece at the top, and it shows sort of changes back and forth as we go. There is a summary page at the end that's important as we go through. So I know some of you like to add up as we go along and things, "Hold on, don't do that yet." And we'll do that on the summary page because there's some other adjustments that have occurred. So here you see the East School Staffing page. And you'll see at the top, there's the enrollment projections. On the left are the 15-16 actual, and on the right are the 16-17 projected. And you see right away here over at East, it's anticipated that we'll be able to go down a section in Grade 3 next year, and that we are, anticipated the need to increase one section in kindergarten, one section in Grade 2 for a net increase of 1.0 FTE. When we have to add an FTE, as we discussed a bit at the workshop, along with that at the elementary level comes the need to add sections for the Unified Arts classes, for the specials, right? When you add in a class or a homeroom, you need a specials area for that homeroom to go to. So when we add an FTE at the elementary, we're looking at a .2 increase right now in the specials area as well, so that we have the staffing. Through the last couple of years, Jill, the elementary principals, and Greg have really worked magic, kind of making all of the specials work and sort of sharing staff between and among the different buildings. But at this point, as we're putting this together, we want to make sure that we appropriately fund what we need. So that's the .2 that would be there. So that would be a 1.2 increase. I do want you to note, though, and we can take a look, when we look at class sizes at the elementary level, there's some magic numbers, right? So our class size guidelines take us from 16 to 20. And so a magic number in the elementary school is 100, because at 100 students, we can run five sections. If we go to 101 students, then we would have to run six sections in order to be within class size guidelines, okay? So if you look at those numbers, you see kindergarten is at 104, Grade 1 is at 104. So those are both very close to that 100 number, you know, as we look at it. But being over 100, then if we went to five sections, we would be over class size guidelines, which in this budget, we strive not to do. Okay? The next page shows you your total certified staff over at East, and then it goes into non-certified staff as well, and then the total staffing plan, which gives you the summary number of staff over at East School. So I'm going to jump to South School, which is page 24 in the lower right-hand corner. And again, at South School, on the left-hand side, we see our enrollment currently and our numbers of sections. Then as we look over to the right, we see the 16-17 projected numbers. And you see, again, keeping your 100 as a magic number at, you see 107 in kindergarten, 102 in Grade 1, 103 in Grade 2. So given this, if this exact projection were to come to pass, South would need to increase 2.0 classroom teachers in order to meet those enrollment increases, which would come with it the subsequent .4 FTE in the specials area. The next page, again, at the bottom gives you your total teachers over at Saks, I mean, I keep doing that, I'm sorry, over at South. And we'll go over to West, page 26. Again, on the left at West, you see the enrollment currently, and then on the right at the top, you see the projected enrollment. And according to these enrollment figures, we're over 100 in the kindergarten, which would lead us to six sections. We'd have five sections in Grade 1, so that's a drop of a section, but going up, one in Grade 2, down one in Grade 3, and up two in Grade 4. So lots of back and forth over at West, but that whole, all of it totals up to 2.0 FTE and the corresponding .4 special area addition. Okay? Pardon?
It's a writing specialist. I was just seeing an extra .5 also. Oh, no.
Oh, no, you're right. Thank you. I was on a roll. The, thank you. The other thing over at West is .5 writing specialist, and we discussed this a bit at the workshop. The purpose here, the idea here is that years ago, West was a smaller school than the other two schools, and our writing support was aligned with the enrollment. Well, as you can see, the West enrollment is increasing. It has been increasing the last couple of years, and so the stress on that writing support has increased. And so this .5 request aligns West as far as the support levels go for writing with the other two elementary schools. When we put the budget together in this format, which breaks out school by school, even this morning, a few people asked me. No game. A few people asked me, "Well, do the elementary schools align?" You know, when you line them up that way, you're going to see that the resources are similarly distributed. And absolutely you are, but this .5 is an important piece of making that alignment complete between the schools. And if we go on to the next page, again, we have our administrators, our non-certified staff, our teaching assistants, which includes the teaching assistants from the preschool, I believe? No, does not. That's in the specialty. Okay, does not. And the total staff over at West. Okay? If we go on to Saks, the needs over at Saks, again, as we discussed briefly in the workshop, are really in that sixth grade. the workshop, are really in that sixth grade. As you know, the certifications in Connecticut run K6 and then 7 through 12. The 7 through 12 are subject area certifications. For instance, I was a high school English teacher, so my certification was 7 through 12 English Language Arts. Uh, the K6 teachers can teach a variety of subjects. And that certification break makes it difficult, if not impossible, for us to transfer from seventh grade, you know, teachers and make all of that work. But in addition to that, you know, we've been working hard through the years to develop the team model at Saks. And the team model is such that we, you have a group of teachers, a group of students, and they stay together and they spend their time together in a, in meaningful ways. And they focus, of course, on the, the, the discipline that they're teaching, but they also get to know each other very well. And middle school students need that type of support. They really thrive on that. It's a very difficult time for children, as you know. Uh, I have a middle schooler myself right now, and one freshman, so she's out of middle school, but still about that age. And it is, it's a very challenging time for kids. The team model establishes an environment where those teachers, the teachers have an opportunity to get to know the students well, students have an opportunity to get their te, get to know their teachers well, uh, and they're able to guide and, and support them as they're going through, uh, these very formative and important years. So the, looking at the sixth grade, um, this, our proposal here, and we believe the best approach, is the addition of two classroom teachers at sixth grade in order to complete the team structure there, to keep those classes within the class size guidelines, and to really have the, um, structure in place to support Saks, you know, for the years ahead. The, uh, we believe, given the enrollment projections, that this teaming model once in place will be sufficient to meet the needs as far as we can see, uh, in the, with those enrollment projections. The, um, it actually turns into a 1.6 addition to the staff because there is a position that is currently split as a part-time classroom teacher, part-time English Language Arts curriculum leader. And as a middle school, the size of our middle school and the, the complexity of our school, we really believe that that part-time curriculum leadership position should become a full-time for the coaching purposes, for the, um, curriculum development work and other things that that position really needs to do. Uh, and that, so it's .6 curriculum now, .4 classroom. We're looking to make that 1.0 curriculum and then transfer the .4 classroom to the sixth grade along with the, uh, the other 1.6 to have the 2.0 complete teachers. Does that make sense? Good, because I don't think I could do it again. Okay. Again, I think that's also another example of how we look to leverage the resources that we have, where we're actually picking up a full-time curriculum leader there and two teachers at the sixth grade. The actual cost in the budget is 2.0 FTE, and as we're looking at it. So I think that's important. Is that true? That's true. Yeah. Okay. And then the next page gives you the administrators breakdown at Saks, uh, and then non-certified staff, where we're looking at summary deployment. We'll jump over to the high school. And now, in the high school, we don't have the breakdown of the enrollment figures, nor did we have them at Saks, because you're really, you're not, you're no longer in a self-contained environment, you know? In an elementary school with a self-contained environment, if you have 100 kids, you have five classrooms, you have class sizes of 20. But in the high school, where students have eight periods to their schedule and they're moving in and out of classes, you know, that's something that's, um, each student accounts for eight different classes, or seven or six, depending upon their schedule, and that, you wouldn't want to see what that would look like on a slide. Uh, so instead, we look at the, we do look at the projections, certainly, as we look at the high school, but we really look at the schedule as it becomes, as it gets developed because, um, what's, what's different about a high school, students are selecting their classes. So we want to be sure that our staffing resources are aligned with our program of studies, with our graduation requirements, and with the high interest areas for our kids. And one of those very high-interest areas for the kids is STEM, computer science work. Uh, so we're looking to actually restore .2 of an FTE that was reduced this year due to enrollment. So just like we are sometimes looking to, you know, increase for different reasons, if we have a program area where the enrollment is low, we also will look for some cost savings in that, or some, make some decisions in that and can reduce the FTE correspondingly. So we're now, Bill Egan and his crew, they're working to develop, uh, some more attractive STEM offerings for students that, we've had program, uh, Project Lead the Way, which has been very successful. But the commitment of Project Lead the Way, we hear from some students, can be, uh, can make, can be a challenge for them, because it is a year-long course and it does run through the school. So what we want to do is develop, or what Bill's working to do is develop a couple of courses that might be semester-long to bring in other students that maybe they're playing music, musical instrument or in chorus and don't have the opportunity to do program, uh, Project Lead the Way, but still are interested in those STEM-type courses. So I think this is a good move for us, an exciting direction to be going in, and is responsive to many of the conversations we've had and you've had as a board about, you know, priorities in the district. And the next page just gives you the second page of the summary, breaking down administrators and the non-certified staff. And then the following page, 32, is the Staffing Plan for Special Education. Again, I apologize for, uh, for this on the screen, but I know you do have it in front of you. Uh, in putting together a presentation like this, um, part of the thinking is, so you know, uh, that it'll be on the website and people will be able to see it. I don't want you to think that we, that I'm thinking this is best practice for use of PowerPoint in a, in a meeting. I know that. Six words is really the goal. But knowing that this will be online and a resource for people to use, we, I thought it would, you know, that's one of the reasons why we include all of this information here. So, but looking at the special education, I do want to just take a moment. The move, the change in special education is, is a significant one in the staffing. And so if we go to the next page, who breaks that out a little bit? What we're looking to do, we have had, um, for a while now, we've had two special education administrators, whose work has, has been divided up. Uh, one individual has been covering special education needs from our pre-K program through sixth grade, or through fifth grade. The other has been covering special education needs from our sixth grade right up through launch, which as you know, is our program for students who have exited high school but are younger, and are younger than 21, but still are in need of support and services. Uh, as you also know, we are responsible as a school district to educate students from pre-K through 21 in our special education program if they qualify. So these two individuals for the, through the years have been covering enormous amounts of, um, both variation of grade level, number of students. And along with the, the students involved with all of that work, you also, we also have the staff, who they evaluate and supervise, both, uh, certified and non. Uh, the parents with whom they communicate regularly. Uh, the, over a thousand PPT meetings that occurred last year, they're involved in one way or another with everyone, typically attending them. But they're working with our students, with our teachers, developing our individualized education plans for each student. They are looking to, uh, help the teachers to assess student progress towards goals as identified in those IEPs. They are also communicating with parents, organizing and arranging for PPT, planning and placement team meetings. Uh, and with all of that happening, they're also responsible for the quality of teaching in their, in the special education department in, in large part. They are evaluators of the teachers using our Tepel document, which is, which demands high, high standards of performance from all of our teachers, including our special education teachers. They also work to supervise our, uh, teaching assistants, which we have over 80 in the district dedicated to our special education efforts. And they work with our teachers and, and supervise our teaching assistants. So the enormity of these roles, uh, it's, it's really impressive, the work that they're doing, given the complexity of the role. And I do think, looking in the last, just the last couple of years, the demands in the special education area, uh, the complexity of the, the regulations and the requirements around this, uh, and the expectations, let's face it, these, you know, student, these can be some of our students that they need a lot of help, and we want to help them. And I think we do an excellent job doing that. We want to continue to do an excellent job helping our students, working with our families, helping every one of our students to be successful. And I think, so what we're looking to do with this proposal is to add one FTE as a special education administrator, and then restructure this program. And restructure it by having one person, uh, responsible for pre-K through grade four. So we're removing Saks in the, in the entire fifth grade out of that equation, which is a very important grade because of that transition, as students come out of the elementary school into Saks, there's a transitionary period there. So a great deal of time and support and effort goes into that. To have 1.0 specifically, uh, at the Saks Middle School. And that person would be working again with the students, with the families, um, working with teachers and with teaching assistants. And then one person specifically with the high school and with the launch program, which again, does take considerable amount of effort, uh, given the complexity of the students' needs that are participating in that program. I think this redesign, this restructure of this leadership in this area will help us in, in a variety of different ways, include, it'll help, I think, our students, it'll help our parents, they'll be that liaison that, who's in the school. Currently, uh, the schedules are such that they're between buildings at the middle school and high school. So Carol, on a certain days, maybe Monday, Wednesday, she might be at one place, Tuesday, Thursday at another, and then half and half, you know, on Friday. But parent needs don't work that way. Student needs don't work that way. Uh, you really, I think, the value of having somebody in the building all the time for those connections and that help will really be, be enormous, be immense. Uh, there's also, of course, that, a lot of this work does hinge on the quality of the relationship with our families. We work in concert and in partnership with our families. And these, uh, these people in these positions are key, in key spots to facilitate that communication. So, I guess, thumbs up. All right. The next page brings us to our facility staffing plan. And in the facility staffing plan, you'll see that it's a 0.0 change, uh, overall, but we are looking to make a, a change in our deployment of personnel. Currently, we have three general mechanics, uh, what, and we have zero HVAC mechanics. What we're really looking to do is go from, we've been a, a generalized shop for a bit, and we believe that by bringing in people with specific expertise, uh, we'll be able to better meet the demands of the facilities. And I think we'll also be able to contain some costs down the line by bringing in these, the, this level of expertise, that mean, that's people and services that we don't have to contract with externally. And we have some big things coming up. You know, we look at, uh, whether it's boilers or other things that are sort of on the horizon, we've got some domestic water and other things. Um, so as we look at those things, we look at the expertise of our staff, this sheet, we're going to look to make this shift over time. So this is a, a sort of a redeployment, and I do believe that we'll see corresponding savings next year in our, uh, contracted services line, which then, when we highlight that, when we're doing FY18, I'll be talking about adding one based on that savings, because really, the ideal is probably for us to have five mechanics on staff. Right now, we have four. But for the, for this next year, we're looking at redeploying the one. Okay? Gosh, you've been so good. All right. Um, okay, so the summary pages. On this front page, and these, the next couple of pages in the presentation, just so they summarize from each of the building staffing plans to give you, just to kind of pull it all together. And what I want, why I want to show you this, and why I asked you not to kind of add these numbers up as we go, is in this top part here, you'll see, under Certified Staff, you can read down East, Southwest, and go down to Special Education, but then below that, there's something called the Enrollment Variability Adjustment. That Enrollment Variability Adjustment is, we've been spending some time really thinking and working together, looking at trends, looking at the student distribution across buildings. You know, it's one thing to, uh, allocate staff based on the aggregate numbers across the building when we look at our kindergarten numbers, but it's another thing to really try to slice those between the, the three buildings and to do so, hi, with high degree of accuracy. So we believe, looking at that and looking at those numbers, remember I said 100 is that golden number? That's sort of the, the line we can't, as we go over, we need six below, we can do five. Most of those were 104, they're 102, 106. They were relative, they were close to that 100 number. So we looked at the variability, we looked at some of the patterns, and we also looked, um, at our ability to move, um, students around, if need be, in different ways. And, uh, with all of that, we believe that instead of the five FTEs that are reflected in the individual schools, that we can actually reduce that by two, to request three for the elementary schools, and that we'd still be able to stay within class size guidelines. Now, that being said, again, if it looks like we're wrong as we go through, uh, we would come back to you and let you know, and say, "Oh, that was our best thinking at the time, but the numbers have borne out differently." Uh, Don Kennedy is a genius, and he's gotten all of these enrollment numbers exactly right across our, our three schools. Uh, that could happen. The numbers could come in higher than projected. Uh, you know, we do watch them, we're keeping an eye on them, and I think we're trending similarly to last year?
Yes.
Yeah. Just af, just after the holidays, we had a rush of, uh, enrollments for kindergarten. And anyone who's listening, who's thinking about enrolling kindergarten student, please do so soon. Uh, but the, so the numbers are trending similarly to last year, maybe, did I hear just a little bit higher?
They're actually right on.
Right on.
Last year, we had 166 preregistered at this time, we have 167 preregistered. But Thursday, we will probably have another group of people that will show up. Last year, we had close to 100 people that preregistered at our Transition to K meeting. So we'll know better after our Thursday meeting.
Great. So we, it's something we watch daily. Jill really keeps a close eye on it. Her years of experience as West School Principal gives her an insight and expertise into all of this, uh, certainly that a former high school principal does not have when we talk about kindergarten enrollment. Um, and so, but we watch. But we, we're looking at this point, at this time, you know, we, understanding that the Board of Ed has charged us pri, significantly, and first priority is to meet, stay within the class size guidelines. Because like you, we believe that those class size guidelines really are one of the strengths of our district and what enable us and empower us to do the great work that we do every day. So we will honor and, honor those guidelines. Uh, if we, if it looks like our Enrollment Variability Adjustment was off, we'll let you know right away, and we'll make some decisions on what to do with that. Okay? With that, um, reduction, we can, we're also able to bring down our special areas teachers, because again, the corresponding .2, that went with each year FTE, if we're going to reduce two, we can then reduce four special areas FTEs, not, you know, from, from the proposal, not from the current. So we can go to page 36, which totals up our certified staff, including our administration. Page 37 gives us the summary of the non-certified staff. And page 38 totals up the non-certified staff and then gives us a total on this, the complete staffing plan. So in summary, so, yeah, I'd move it right along. In summary, on the next page, 39, the elementary schools, given the adjustments and changes and things, we're looking at 4.1 FTE. Because the distribution between buildings is subject to variability, uh, we, we feel confident in that adjustment downwards of those two, but we'll certainly, are open to the conversation as we go forward, and we'll certainly continue to closely monitor it and adjust as necessary. Point five of that is that writing specialist at Sa, at West. At Saks, it's 2.0. It's the sixth grade teachers, which is 1.6, and then it's completing that .6 of the Language Arts Curriculum Leadership to become a 1.0 position. At the high school, it's .2. And then the special education area, it is adding that building leadership position. All right? Okay. So the next page gives an estimate of the new staffing costs. Of course, it depends upon, uh, the applicants and the expertise, and as a district, you know, we hire the best people who come into our positions. We didn't use a starting teacher salary for this, we were up a little bit higher than that. Um, but the, generally, the costs we would, we would budget for, the 3.5, the 1.6, and you can see that through. So this, all of the new staffing requests total a little over $500,000. So this, all of the new staffing requests total a little over $500,000. Okay? Okay. Digging your heads into the numbers. That's good. The slide 41 breaks out our total salary costs. Oh, this is, these are older numbers, aren't they? Okay. I'm not sure how that happened. Let's go to the next slide. I apologize. Okay, slide 42, if you could. It's a little more confusing, but it has the same numbers, the more accurate numbers. The, you'll see that our total certified staffing is going from the projected cost this year of $40,666,984 to the proposed of $42,596,693. Do you have those right, Neil? Yeah, okay. That's what happens when you're moving between systems. Okay. The, let's see. Okay. Well, it kind of breaks out. And this is an awful lot to look at on one page. And I think the columns, we present it this way in part because we try to look at trends, and we like to share what it is over time. When we look back at '13, '14, and '15, we're able to share the expended amount in those budget items, because those budgets have been processed and completed and closed out. It's the 16 budgeted versus, and the 16 projected, that the 16 budgeted is what we had budgeted last year as we worked through. And then the projected is that reforecast that we were able to do. Okay? Okay. So why don't we jump to our most significant, our largest budget driver? And I'll give an overview of the benefits. But before I do that, I do want to share that at our next meeting on the 25th, our new insurance consultant, Joe Spurgeon, will be joining us to engage in the discussion around benefits. We have some decisions to make, you have some decisions to make as a board, around some of the funding with the benefits. And Joe's expertise and experience will really, I think, help guide us in some of that decision making. The, you'll probably recall, last year, a decision was made to use part of the reserve, about 1.1 million was the anticipated amount, part of the reserve to supplant the operating budget amount, right? So to reduce the budget by that amount and then move money from the reserve in, to meet the anticipated claims amount. That, it's the third year that the district have been doing that. And, you know, it's worked through the years, I think, to keep the total budget lower as we've gone through. But as a result of that decision, those decisions, the operating budget doesn't fully reflect the true costs of the insurance program in this year. So before we can move the insurance number forward at all, based on claims history and other costs and things happening, we first have to true it up to the actual costs of this year. And then we can add, we need to add whatever we need to based on our claims history and experience and costs. So the 1.1 deficit essentially that we go into the year is the first step of kind of truing that up to where it is. And we're not sure exactly what that'll wind up being. We're hoping that claims run very well, and we can be at the 1.1 million. If claims don't run well, it might be a higher number. Which in part is why you have a reserve, so that if it, excuse me, doesn't run according to plan, you can make up that difference. But the purposefully doing that has reduced the amount available in those reserves. So before we can look at what the FY17 cost would be, we have to, at least in our planning, make the FY16 budget whole. So right now, that's about 1.1 million. And then the change from there is whatever increase would be on the budget, on the insurance line, which really does come directly from our claims history. And Joe is working up some scenarios for us around that now, that he'll be able to share with us on the 25th. You should also know, we have taken some steps to contain costs around our insurance in the last year. We did go out to bid on our stop losses, our aggregate stop loss and our individual stop loss. Our aggregate stop loss was at 25%. We went out to bid on that, and we were able to secure that at 20% for the same cost, so we did that. So that 20% represents what we'll call, what's called the corridor. And it's the difference between your 100% of anticipated claims and your, the corridor gets you to the 120%, and then after that, 21% beyond, if we were to hit that, the insurance company essentially reinsures those claims, and would step in to help us. So the liability is that corridor, which is the difference between 100% of claims and 120. So by bringing that number down from 25 to 20, it works to reduce the size needed of the corridor. Unfortunately, though, none of the companies would bite or give us a quote on reducing our individual stop loss. My understanding of it, and again, Joe can speak to it more perhaps, but my understanding of it was that because we're going out to bid, the insurance company thought we knew something they didn't know about anticipated claims. And so we, they weren't interested in reducing that. So a few years ago, a decision was made to go from $100,000 as an individual stop loss number to $300,000, which saved us some money in the short term around the cost of those plans. But it does seem to directly correlate with when our overall claims experience seemed to start to deteriorate, to use the market word. So we're going to keep looking at that to see if there's something we can do. But that's one of the ways that we look to contain costs. We went out to bid on those two plans. We've also, we're in the midst of a dependent eligibility audit with all of our insurance users, where we've contracted with a company who's been contacting them, and it's very easy. I did it myself when the information came through, where employees just upload to a portal evidence of the eligibility of the dependents on their plan. And it just helps to be sure that everybody in the plan is appropriately placed there. So those are some of the cost containment measures we've looked at around insurance. Of course, we've also looked at, in our negotiations, to be aggressive in our insurance planning. The, currently, over 80% of our teachers participate in a high deductible health plan. Next year, that's going to be 100%, because one of the negotiated pieces of our arbitrated settlement was the elimination of the PPO plan for the teachers. So they will, all teachers will be in the HDSA. We also, through arbitration, were awarded a new plan design, which included a 90-10 coinsurance plan for when the members of the HDSA reached the deductible where it was fully covered. Now it's a 90-10 coinsurance split up to an out-of-pocket maximum. And that out-of-pocket maximum had always been there, so that liability is the same as far as that cost goes. There were, teachers were paying separately for prescription medication. And now it's all rolled into the plan. So the prescription medication and doctor visits and things are all into the plan. So the administration should be a little cleaner. Hopefully, the use for the teachers is a little clearer. And that 90-10 coinsurance, we anticipate helping in our claims. We've also been very aggressive with, excuse me, our premium share. As you know, teachers are paying 18%. Food service and teaching assistance pay 22, secretaries pay 23, and administrators pay 23. And that's their premium share of the total cost of the plan. We also had some good news, and you may have heard that the Cadillac tax legislation has been delayed or put off for two more years. We were hoping for three more years, because we typically negotiate three-year contracts. But last time, we negotiated two-year contracts, because the Cadillac tax was supposed to come. So we'll renegotiate two-year contracts and see what happens with the Cadillac tax and all of those pieces. But that was good news. So if we look at, just breaking out the benefits pieces, again, just trying to bring a little bit more clarity to it. Primarily, you're looking, your increases right in that second line, right in that health insurance line. You see, the 10-5 was our budgeted amount. Our anticipated claims were 11-6. Going forward into next year, it's looking at like around 14. That is a, the change over the projected, yep. It should be dollar change over projected, I think, but that's okay. So you see that significant change, a 3.6 essentially million dollars. And that will be a large focus of our conversation, because as you can, would think, $3.6 million on an 83-some-odd-million-dollar budget is a significant percentage. So we're going to talk about the budget in terms of with that number included and without that number included, because that single budget number did have that potential to blow everything else out, as I talked about. But we can't, I think, certainly as an administrative team, we feel strongly that we don't want to let that overshadow the other program enhancements and the other work that we really are charged with here. So we want to be able to have this discussion about the insurance, looking at the costs and understanding them as best as we can, while also talking about our, again, our strategic priorities as a school district. Okay? So the next page just gives you that same shot from your budget document. So that you can see that there. And then a few of the other objects that we have. Six minutes till kickoff. Sorry. Contracted services. We're actually going down a little bit in contracted services by 124,413. Part of that is, thanks, we have completed our arbitration process with the NCEA. So we're bringing down our legal fees a bit. Again, remembering that we're doing this based on our projected costs, not our budgeted costs, right? So those, you know, those decisions that go to arbitration and things, it is expensive. And so that did lead to slightly higher legal costs in this year than we had anticipated when we built the budget. So next year, however, we're bringing that number down a little bit. We also have a position that due to some attrition, we wound up having to outsource or to hire an outside contractor for a speech position. And yet, that is a position we've had in our budget through the years, and we believe, we want to bring that back into the budget, and that'd help us a little bit. We're also, in contracted services, an increase, we're looking to add interns at the high school who will be able to assist with teacher absences. You know, it's interesting, we've, like many districts around us, I think all districts around us, we've been challenged to find substitutes, enough substitutes to fill all of our teaching vacancies lately. And I think maybe it's a good statement of an improving economy. Maybe people have other jobs instead of their temporary work as substitute teachers. But we have had challenges doing that. So this would be to have two teaching interns, so they'd be with us during the day, then taking classes at night at one of the colleges nearby. We wind up, we don't pay them directly, we actually wind up paying their tuition. And we get a grid rate that way, and we get someone who really is working hard to become a teacher. So you get some people in these positions who want to learn, and when they're in front of a class, they take advantage of that as an opportunity for them to learn as they're sort of growing as teachers. I like the analogy of kind of a teaching hospital, you know? It's like, a school should be focused on teaching all members of the school community. So when we bring in someone to serve as an intern or a teaching assistant, it's always best when that person kind of aspires to be a teacher. And then they're there as learners and contributors in different ways. So that's one of the strengths of that program there. And then the next page, again, gives lots of numbers straight out of the budget document for our contracted services. The next slide is our property service, which is also decreasing a little bit, $83,000 or so. This is thanks to the decrease in heating fuel costs and a slight decrease in the repair costs with the restructuring of the maintenance department. Very slight. We'll see how that's actualized as we go through. But as you know, heating fuel costs have been coming down. And thanks to Bob and Joanne, we're able to actualize some savings there. We were a little worried about being locked into a two-year contract, but I think some powerful conversations occurred that helped us to realize some savings there. And there's a slight increase in that line around some of the software license against support, although I believe some of that has to do with reclassifying some things. And the corresponding budget page from your book. Get the pattern here? My creativity really waned after the first 30 or so slides. We end up purchase services. Purchase services in this proposed budget is increasing by about $250,000, 258,403, which is an increase of 3.4%. The largest item and the greatest increase in this budget is our out-of-district tuition. This, the budget proposal in front of you provides for the assumption of increasing costs based on our recent history, including mandated legal settlements. It also, it continues to gross budget for our special education budget. You remember, last year, we had extensive conversations about gross budgeting versus net budgeting. We continue to have conversations with the town about it. But, you know, we now have a base, what we consider to be the whole cost. Last year, as we put together our budget. However, we've also found, I've learned, that many districts build in assumptions around this number year to year, based on potential for students coming into district. So we've also looked at some assumptions that sort of get built into the number a bit in order to help us to manage, you know, these costs. The, as you know, and Darlene shared a presentation with us back in October, or November, October, November. We work very, very hard to educate all of our students right here in our schools, because we believe that we can, for the vast majority of our students, we can meet their needs here. We've got outstanding staff, incredibly talented specialists to do that. But there are times where, for whatever reason, the resources aren't exactly what that student needs. But really, we do work very, very hard to contain all of these costs and continue to provide the outstanding education to our children, that, you know, that is our commitment to do. Our transportation budget's in here, which is increasing 2.9% contractually. And we do have some saving in here based to a decrease, based on the decrease in diesel and gasoline costs. So we do use diesel, we do use some gasoline, and those savings are reflected in here. And there's the nitty-gritty. Next comes supplies. There's a $125,000 increase in this budget in supplies, which is 9.55%. These supplies really are those two areas that I talked to about when we were talking about program enhancements. We're looking at instructional supplies for our elementary math program, specifically, it's K1. And these are the supplies that are necessary in order to implement the curriculum with fidelity, which is true, which is essential, and I think a strong component of our success. We also have a word study program in the elementary schools. And money, resources going towards our STEM program, which we began expanding in recent, I think, last year. And we want to continue to expand K8. We also see an increase in textbooks here. And those textbooks, again, leveled readers for the elementary school. Mentor text, elementary mathematics program, again, with a K1. But it also goes, as I mentioned before, to the high school with the expanded advanced placement program. Just a couple of years ago, we added, for instance, the physics advanced placement course. We had an honors physics class, and we looked at the, our syllabus, we looked at the college board syllabus, and said, wow, these are very, very similar. Let's, so that year, we had the students try to take the AP test if they wanted to, see how they did. They did extremely well. And the following year, we turned that into an AP Physics 1 class. It's an A. College Board requires that we have textbooks that are 2010 or more current. Our textbooks are 2008. So one of the investments we need to make is to revamp our textbook there to make sure that it aligns with the standards around the college board. Other areas, we've been expanding the program. As you know, we've added over seven new AP courses in the last, say, five years. We've purchased the textbooks and things we've needed to get those off the ground. But now, with the larger junior class coming into the senior class, and with the popularity of these classes, you know, we're trying to continue to bolster the enrollment there. We have money in the budget in order, that will allow us to purchase the necessary textbooks for the increased enrollment. And as you can imagine, an AP course, as a college-level course, doesn't have an inexpensive textbook. So these, we're talking about, you know, books that are well in excess of $100. There's also a small increase in athletic supplies to accommodate expanding programs there as well. And again. And then the last slide is the, not last slide, the last objects are the equipment and other. There's a slight decrease here in the equipment line. We continue to manage the equipment purchases and leases as closely as possible. We continue to manage the equipment purchases and leases as closely as possible. And then there's a large decrease in other, $783,405. That has to do with the reforecasting of the budget. So as we went through the salary lines and all of the other lines and really worked to very accurately project what the costs will be in each of those lines, you know, a balance accumulated as we went through. That was placed into other. And so as we look at it, that currently totaled out to about that 783. Now, that's, it's not unusual for a school district, for us, to have a balance like this, in part because of our turnover last year. We hired over 40 new teachers this past year. If you came, if you were at our new teacher orientation back in August, you came, you saw that this Wagner Room was pretty packed with folks. Those teachers, because we pay teachers on a salary grid, often those that leave are those that are towards the top of the scale, at the top of the grid. Their replacement teachers that would come in typically would not be at the top of the scale, would be somewhere below. And you have that turnover savings. Now, in a given year, it varies with the number of teachers that are, you know, staff members in general who come and go. For whatever reason, last year, we did have a high number, you know. So with over 40 teachers who are leaving our district and coming in, we had a few administrators as well, well, one in particular with our Director of Digital Learning. And as you may recall, Matt wasn't able to start in our district until August, so there's two months of savings there. So sort of you start to look at kind of those differences year to year and it makes sense as this turnover savings is realized. You, you will see in the budget document itself that there is a line called turnover savings in the salary accounts. And that is a number that's meant to account for, you know, this turnover. You'll also recall, last year, the Board of Finance asked us to reduce our budget request by $250,000 citing or suggesting that we look in the salary account, we take it from there. And we did. We took it, we reduced our salary request by that amount in acknowledgement of, you know, what their suggestions were. However, when someone looks at our budget document, they wouldn't know that because it's not explicitly spelled out as kind of a credit against the budget itself. So in discussion, we decided, let's make it very explicit and clear by putting a line for turnover savings that we could then use. And now, although we don't have any retirements yet for next year, we're in, we've put $100,000 reduction in the retirement savings because we, I don't think we've ever had a year, at least that I'm not aware, not that I'm aware of, where we haven't had at least two people retire. So we've put that there, but that's how that will be kind of accounted for going forward in the budget. But this other, of course, we're not going to fund that account, so you see that decrease going in year to year. I hope that makes sense. Good? Okay. And again, that, just those two budgets that sort of, that break it out a little bit, but the equipment and other are both very flat accounts as we go through. So, excuse me. So overall, this year's operating budget is for $88,695,033 in expenditures, which is a 5.494 million dollar increase, 6.4% year to year. But that number, again, doesn't tell the story because three point, about 3.6 million of the 5.4 is attributed directly to employee benefits and the decisions to use the reserves to bring down that amount. That's 4% of the overall 6.4% increase. So pulling out the salary, the benefits line, the year-to-year increase becomes 2.4%. I think that's a good place to just dramatic pause. Okay. So 2.4%, and that's a number that we've been talking about and thinking about because, you know, granted, we are looking at some staff enhancements or, you know, by adding some staff based on our enrollment. We're looking at that program redesign in the special education and we understand that there's an investment there. We, we believe the returns far outweigh the investment, but it is an investment. We, we need to do some of our, we need to make the purchases around our elementary math program and our textbook programs. So you see that we, while it would have been easy to run from the 4% number in insurance and say, nothing else and whatever, what we've actually done is said, okay, what can we remove? What, what can we defer, put aside, you know, sort of take off the table? And what are our highest leverage priorities to move forward in this budget? And that's hopefully what you've seen as we've gone through. So essentially, what we've done, what we've worked to do is focus on what really matters. And as we think about it, and as you think about the budget and where we're going from here, I think it's just important to keep in mind some questions. You know, why are we a premier district? What are these strategic priorities for the next few years? And how can we be responsive to all of our stakeholder groups? Those who contribute, those who receive, and those who serve. And as a starting point, I think this operating budget does a good job addressing these questions and clearly articulating, you know, those beliefs. How are we doing?
Great. Do you want to, do you want to stop here and ask questions on the operating or do you want to go right into capital?
It is completely, at your pleasure.
Yeah, I think, I'd like to start with the operating, if you don't mind. So I, well, let me.
And I will defer to my very experienced team wherever possible during the question.
Well, I want to thank your very experienced team, I mean, Dr. Lotzi, Dr. Keating, Tracy, the entire administrative staff. I know this was a Herculean effort and it shows in the level of detail and I think not only the board, but the town is going to be thrilled with this, this level of detail. So thank you very much. I know you didn't have a very fun weekend last weekend. So I'm going to defer to everyone else. I have a bunch of questions, but let me, and also, I have a few, a bunch, but I'll make them short because we all know there are, there's a national championship game tonight too. So, who has some questions? Sheri?
So I echo Diana's comments. I mean, this is, you know, having been through this three times now, this is definitely the greatest level of detail, the presentation, it's all there. It's, it's incredible, the progress that's been made over the budget cycle, so congratulations on that. So just one clarifying question, when we look at page 15, which is the top overlap, over summary and then that last page, is the actual budget 88.5 or 88.7? I mean, what, those two don't tie in, I'm just.
Are they not tying?
I just want to make sure we're all talking the same total budget number and the same variance.
There was, I think, a change over the weekend that you didn't pick up on your last slide. It's 88,541,473.
Okay, with a 5.34. So this detailed is.
Can you get your microphone? Sorry. That should just go in the microphone, sorry.
So the page 15 detail are the correct and most updated numbers? Okay.
Yes.
So I apologize for that. We had been working through the weekend and even through the day.
Right, when we understand.
And unfortunately, yeah, I had it on the laptop and on my desktop and I think I saved the wrong final copy, which had a couple of little edits. So as far as what's online, I will, I will go back into here and make sure that everything is, is aligned across.
Great. And then just, I just, maybe a little more clarification. I understand the, the new capability with a position control, but is the, the variance in the, like, the other objects line from the 2016 budget to the 2016 projected to the, is that linked? I mean, was there reclassification between salaries and other objects? Because obviously, you know, the salary line went down and the other objects went up significantly. So there were, the reclassifications were happening there?
Right.
Can you just explain that one more time so I understand how and why that happened?
Sure. I did go through all of the accounts within the budget, which are many, to reforecast them out based on what we're actually expending. And there were areas outside of the salary accounts that had actually increased. So for example, legal fees for negotiations had to be increased in the forecast based on actual expenditures. We've had a number of facility projects that have come up and that's where, really where you're going to see a big bump of several hundred thousand dollars that we had to reforecast up because of the need that has come in. And as I looked at, you know, some of the history with regards to some of the movement of money with, between the accounts, it appears to me that, you know, the salary account was actually used to help offset some unforeseen expenditures in areas like facilities, for example. The other area that went up was tuition out of district. That went up by a few hundred thousand dollars over budget. And contracted services for special education. So all of the, the accounts were reforecasted based on our current spending and our projected spending through the end of the year.
Mm-hmm. And so I, I understand that and maybe then we can just think of a simple way to explain that. And then also, like, what you were explaining at the end with the, the salary grid and the retirements and picking up at different points, like, and you're explaining that that as an explanation for the variance in the other line, but I would expect to see that in the salary line. So I'm just, I feel like.
So it's the variance in the salary line, the remain, the variance in the salary line and then other accounts that might have been underbudgeted based on our projections, what some of that, the variance would go there. And then the remaining variance is in that other line. So that's where it's accounted for.
Okay.
What, the remaining.
So perhaps, you know, I could just add that when you build your budget for a subsequent year, you want to have a clean starting point. And that's not necessarily your budget. And even in the best of budgeting scenarios, you have turnover, you have people come and go, you have switches between schools and so forth. So you really want to get your accounts trued up, so to speak, to what you anticipate spending in the year. So you have some really good comparisons when you're looking, looking to make budget decisions.
Right.
And, and what happened here this year is that when I went through that process, at the end of the day, there was money remaining that was not allocated back up for any purpose. So we made a decision to show you that and say, you know, you're going to have, it's actually higher, so we'll correct that side as well. But, you know, we wanted the board to be aware of the fact that at the end of the day, if everything happens as projected, there's going to be a balance. And so there's going to be some decisions around that, you know, what do we do with that balance? And so we'll have that conversation when the time is right. But there certainly are a few ideas we've kicked around.
Mm-hmm. Right. So the, just as you look at the numbers, the, the resource to use is that budget book, right? Not the landscape one, the portrait one. And again, I'll make sure everything ties up.
Okay. And just, I guess my last comment or question is, one, I really like the waterfall at the end. I mean, that's, I would maybe put, starting with something like that, I think is really helpful, kind of summarizing the key, I mean, because like you said, the insurance is the big piece and then the out-of-district tuition, which we effectively then will get reimbursed for, which we can't, we can't affect. So, I mean, showing those chunks that we can affect and then getting to the salary increases and breaking that down between the contractual increase and the new positions. And you're left with just a very small discretionary piece that we should be focusing on and discussing relative value for and, and really making sure that we understand those different requests and even your relative priority of those requests. Because, you know, we're asking for, you know, five or six new FTE, very different positions. We're talking about classroom teachers versus a sped administrator. And, and it's important that we're having some substantial discussion about the relative, you know, value or priority of, of those decisions, how they affect our classrooms and our students and the quality of our instruction, et cetera. And I feel like, just from this presentation, I'm clear on the enrollment-driven positions, like the classroom teachers, but maybe we'll look for more clarification on that sped administrator role because that's not so formulaic, if you will.
Right.
It's more complexity-driven. And I'm not sure, I guess I would look to have, I need more understanding of, you know, what's driving that and what happens if we can't fund that and, you know, what's the effect on our system and our students, so.
Good. Happy to do that. Good. Thank you, Sheri.
Before I call on someone else, I just want to follow on with Sheri's comment because I think, I think it actually is important for Darlene to speak on this. You know, I think it'd be good for us to get some history on how long we've had two special ed administrators and some context for how much the mandates and the, the increase in enrollment has, has shifted in, in special education. So people have some sort of sense for the increased load within your group from the time we've had. I think, I think that's an important context for people to really understand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Before I ask anything, anybody else have some questions they'd like to ask? Penny?
It's a small question, but I was just wondering, I knew during our budget workshop, Jay Egan had talked about funding request for assistant coaches for, I think it was the JV girls and, yeah, golf team.
Yes.
It would certainly take advantage of those great new tennis courts that we have. I didn't see anything on that. I was wondering what happened with that request.
Those are included.
We included the first tier that he requested. He had two tiers.
Yes.
Of requests. So the first tier is in here.
So that includes, do you know if that includes?
If you remember, it was broken out to be, it was broken out to be programs that couldn't run without those coaching positions. And then the second tier was enhancements too. So we did, we did cover the, the programs that wouldn't run without the support and help of the All Sports Booster Club, which should be in one, are they in one of the cost centers?
Yeah, they're in his cost center. There's a cost center for athletics in here. You'll see the increase in the coaching stipends there.
All right. So we are covering the JV golf and tennis.
And Jay is currently at a basketball game, but I've asked him to join us on the 25th.
And then I just, you know, maybe some historical perspective on the health insurance. This is, you know, we have been predicting that this day would come for, I think, about four years. And so it's arrived on the health insurance. And, I mean, one of the things that, I guess I might, I don't know how much it would help, but it might be nice to have a slide in here showing what we had requested for health insurance. And then it was through a discussion with the town bodies and a specific decision by everybody involved in the process to spend down the reserves that our, our request for health insurance did not get increased. So I think, I don't know how the numbers would come out, but I think, you know, I think last year was about 1.5 million, but I think it's been a significant number for the last few years.
It has been. I think over the last three years, I, it has been, I think it was around 750,000 two years ago. Last year was in excess of 900,000. And then this year is anticipated to be about 1.1 million.
Right.
I think I'm pretty close on the numbers, Joanne, right?
And then I don't know if it's worth historically going back, but I mean, if we get into it, it was a joint decision with the town bodies, with the insurance expert going to the town bodies when we changed the insurance levels and the aggregate stop-loss and individual stop-loss at that time. I think that was about, I think that might have been five years ago, four years ago at least. In any event, like two, was it?
Yeah.
No. No, it was more than two budgets ago.
It was right before I, I got on the board, so it has to be like three, three and a half.
Yeah, I think, it was a while ago. It was one of our first, our first discussions. Anyhow, so I just wanted to give that as all of these things, none of the, none of this has been done by the Board of Ed in isolation. This has all been with full facts, open to everybody, knowing it. And I think that, you know, not all of you were part of that process and certainly not all the people on the town boards were part of the process as well. So I think maybe that's why it might be helpful just to have some slide if people start asking questions that gives us, that's able to refer to.
Yep. And I think, again, that's where Joe will be able to help us as far as sort of future planning. And again, it's not to say good or bad decision, you know, as we've gone through, it's just.
Just the facts.
It was, these are the facts. And this was the decision made. I think an argument, argument could be made that it saved taxpayers' money and they, you know, and the budgeting and the budget increase through the years. But now, you know, the, the bill is due and we just need to true that up.
Right.
Thank you, Penny.
Hazel?
I want to commend you, as everybody else has, on the wonderful job you and everybody else has done to put this budget together. It is really detailed and provides a lot of information. I wanted to ask, as we go through the process, one of the things that I, I understand what you're doing with the numbers and the enrollment and to look at them and carefully look at them and try and analyze, and we never really know until October 1st, really, who's sitting in the seats. But as we go through this, if you see the enrollment starting to go up, to please come back to us and let us know how many classes may be over guidelines or something like that. Because I think that's. that, because I think that's something very important to the educational process that we have in New Canaan. And I think that's something we'd like to support. So, even though we may start on this road, if you see the numbers coming in, let us know.
We certainly will. I'll say Gary's staff monitors this extremely closely, and Scott's staff with Rick Ruah and our registrar, they work closely together to keep an eye on it. So, almost weekly, we're getting updates around where we are. So, we will certainly keep an eye, and if it trends differently than we're anticipating, we'll certainly let you know right away. Definitely.
Thank you.
I just had a comment. There's a lot of material to digest, so I don't have specifics, but I know I'm going to have questions later for next read. But just a couple of comments. I mean, again, I know everyone said about, you know, the great detail at work that's in here, but the ability to just, you know, do this new system of being able to project, because I know that's always been an issue. People are saying, like, you know, you lose people, but it's really hard to figure out when you have this giant budget with people moving and so many moving parts, that you're actually able to quantify it now a little bit more, and again, get a better estimate of what we're doing going forward. But I also wanted to echo something that, you know, Sherri had mentioned about that waterfall effect of just, and you had mentioned when we first started this, that we don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, we had this huge increase in insurance. It is what it is because of different decisions that were made, but we can't lose sight of the fact, because that's such a big increase, that we don't do the other things that are needed. I mean, we know that enrollment's up, and we do have to accommodate those students and give them the best education that we've always given to everybody. And you've made some great areas where you've shown some efficiencies, so we've had some decreases, and it's, sounds great that we've only had really 2.4% increase, really the budget if you took that insurance piece out. But I'm not sure if I get it, because it's so buried in at the bottom, and just have a good reminder as we're kind of presenting that, just that that's a key point to keep upfront. And then when you did do the FTEs for this, the classrooms, you know, I understood it was very clear how you got that and where you did, but I wasn't quite sure exactly on that, what you call the, that adjustment piece that you had. So, it changed the FTEs, and you brought it down. Exactly how that worked, just so that makes, you know, because I know it affects the class size, and I was following you all the way through it, but then I kind of got lost in how all of a sudden we can shortcut that and get to a better number and not have it be how that all works. So, just a little bit more for clarification on how that goes.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, well, I'd like to ask, well, make two comments, actually. One, I applaud Bob and the Finance Department and you really looking at the facilities management, and I think that the electrical and the HVAC specialists is a phenomenal idea. I mean, anybody who lives in an older home realizes that you're calling those specialists more than anything else, and I think, you know, we'll save dollars by adding that staff. So, I, you know, I know that's an easy place for town bodies to go after, but I think, you know, that that'll pay dividends for us for years. So, thank you. And then the other comment I want to make, because I was waiting for Penny to go into the insurance, because I would like to note that I think my daughter's a junior, and I think I was a Board of Ed rep when she was in eighth grade, so that's, you know, four years ago. When I vividly remember Penny and Allison discussing that this day was going to come, that, that we were not, we were going to be seeing a budget increase like this because we were building on, you know, we were taking the reserves, we were taking the reserves to understate our insurance expenses. We did it year after year after year, and to the point where we said, there's going to be a year, you can't take any more reserves, and you're going to have, you're going to have a huge jump in your insurance number, and this is the year. This is the year. And so, you know, that, we need to focus on, it's a 2.4% educational budget increase, it is not a six-point, you know, whatever. That's, that's from bad decisions that were made in the past, or decisions to help the budget, whatever you want to say. I'd also like, I think when we start to have this insurance conversation next week, or at the next board meeting with our new consultant, I'd really like to understand how much this increasing the individual stop-loss from 100 to 300 has impacted our insurance costs. Because I think, you know, if you look at what the town has done in developing its own insurance, when they went to self-insured, they took what we used to have, which is $100,000 stop-loss, or maybe it's, I don't know exactly where they are, it's 100, between 100 and 150, because they saw what's happening to us by raising our individual stop-loss to 300. So, I just think we need to be clear that some of that, some of those issues that we're facing now were the direct result of decisions that were made three years ago, and I understand, I understand why they were made, but we're paying for them today. So, I just, I can't leave that unsaid. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. I guess we'll move into-
Capital, which is quite a bit quicker.
Good.
So, our capital budget is comprised of three different elements. It's our facilities, our ICT, and transportation. You'll see a page on page 59 of the presentation, it's also right in your budget document. The proposed capital budget, which breaks out the proposed and the costs at each of the, each of the locations. You'll see that while many of these are from the five-year plan that we had, developed the last couple of years, a couple of them have been accelerated. For instance, at South, that domestic hot water boiler was a few years out, but it turns out that we need it sooner rather than later. On the next page at Saks, you'll see the same thing, the domestic boiler replacement, domestic hot water. The good news is we got it, we received a quote for that, that was actually half of what we had anticipated in the look ahead. So, instead of the 50,000 we had anticipated, actually it's 25, but it is something that boiler goes down, we don't have hot water in a school, we don't have kids in a school. So, it's, when I say critical, that's one of those critical areas. Included in the capital budget are the replacement vehicles for the special education in district transportation system that we have. If you recall, last year, we had put forth a five-year plan to, for replacement of our vehicles. This, we were fortunate in that last year, they funded the FY16 request with fund balance from FY15. So, you're able to purchase those vehicles and have them, right, join the fleet right away, which also meant we could retire some older vehicles that were well past retirement age. Looking forward, this keeps us aligned with the plan that we had put forth last year. As you know, these vehicles are used extensively, and we just would, we would look to replace four of the oldest and highest mileage vehicles. I think each of them would be, is over 200,000 miles, and the cost of repairs on those vehicles, as you can imagine, continues to escalate. So, this is, well, it's a replacement, it also is a savings for us because of the repair costs would come down a bit as we put in new, new equipment. In technology, we have our technology lease. As you may recall, last year, we had talked to the town funding bodies and talked to them about working at $150,000 level for the lease for this next year, which is $600,000 of purchasing power. The lease, as you know, is a four-year lease, which, we don't lease the equipment, I think a lot of people get this wrong, but we do, we finance the money, essentially. So, we wind up, we pay for four years' worth of investment, one-fourth of each year. So, if we, for $600,000 of purchasing power, it adds $150,000 to the lease. The, this year's lease is for $200,000, although the exact number we're looking to get from the town finance department, just so we can be as accurate as possible. Previous payments of 93,000 and the 185-plus are leases from, from the past. So, in next year's, in the FY18 budget, that $93,000 payment will have rolled off, and then, and a new one will have rolled on, is how that works. So, we're always paying those four years. But for, again, for that $150,000 investment, we have $600,000 or so of purchasing power for new technology. And with that, those investments, and certainly Matt and Scott are both here for more information, if you like, we look to replace outdated equipment where it exists in different spots. We're looking at some program enhancements and improvements, and certainly looking at, we're watching closely the high schools move with technology in order to determine what future costs might be associated with that expansion as well. So, the total capital budget request, that is facility, special education vehicles, and technology, is for the 2.819 million. We are, a couple of years ago, we began developing and sharing this sort of five-year capital plan. And, you know, as we, when you have a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, a three-year plan, you don't, you're always looking five years out, and you're revising the current year's plan based on the environment, based on things that change. So, what we've done here is you can see the items that were here, and the middle column, it identifies items that were deferred. So, something, for instance, the lighting retrofit at East may have been scheduled for 1617, but given the urgent needs in 1617, the decision was made to defer that item. The roof replacement, we'd been speaking with the town, and they had asked us around, can we defer some of the larger capital items? Do we think we can, we would be okay with that? We'll certainly keep a close eye on it, and if something goes very wrong, then we would have to accelerate it. But after taking a good, hard look, Bob was comfortable deferring that a little bit. You also see those items that are accelerated in green, and those, again, are the things that were out in future years, that we've said, these are urgent needs, let's move them up. We want to take care of them now before they become a problem for our schools. And the next page mirrors the same. And again, these pages are also in your budget document as a reference. And the last page totals them up. And it is our best understanding and our best look ahead as far as the five years go, but, you know, conditions change, and it's, it's our responsibility to be adaptive to those changing conditions. The five-year capital technology plan just breaks, just shows you that progression of payments and how those work. Again, it's a forecast going ahead, oh, I didn't change the sex level. It's the best that we can, the, but in 1819 or 1920, there are, conditions can change. But this is with, with that $150,000 of new payment. Okay? You know, the last couple of pages, I'm going to stop there, actually, to see if there are any questions around capital. We have our folks here, again, to answer any questions that you might have about any of the, those items in the capital budget, any more detail that you would like.
Any questions?
Yeah, just that, I was going to say, it's very detailed, the five-year, but I just don't have the years on top, so maybe, or maybe it didn't show up on just-
It's light.
Okay, sorry, because that would be helpful to know.
It just didn't show up. It should be in your book.
Okay, all right, that's fine. And then the last column, is that, that's just a total of everything across, or, because I noticed at the last unit, you end up with a 16 million, but that's not projected for a particular year, that's just the total of all the-
That's the total projected capital needs, left to right.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Penny?
The new security roll-down gate, the cafe at Saks, which, which gate is that? Is that a new gate, or is that a replacement gate?
We cut the opening, and we have an extra hurry brought up at the avenue, and it really needs to have a grill that they can bring down, who are the cafeteria serving?
So, this is part, this is, these are the changes that were made last year?
Last year, right?
Yes.
Yes, related to the changes in the cafeteria to improve service last year. Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay. I think we're-
Okay. So, I'm going to surprise you by saying the next couple of pages are just for your reference. It goes through grants and some of the other funds, and I know we'll have more conversation about all of those, but essentially, those look at, it gives a summary of the grants and our income and management around the grants, and then a breakdown of our school lunch program, facilities rental, and the summer enrichment program. The, all of those pages are also, again, included in your budget documents, but we, I just wanted to highlight that they're there, and they tie out to the audit, you know, the town's audit. Those funds are not part of our operating or capital funds, and so they are, the balance is reported on June 30th each year in the audit reports that we do in conjunction with the town.
I have a question.
Okay, thank you.
I know the rest of these are all on different accounts. Are the grants also considered a, are the grants applied to the budget at all, or no, that's also kept separate?
No, grants are managed in the budget and-
Yeah, they are, okay.
-to help and supplant different costs at different times.
And are they listed as one item in the budget, or are they also just specific for each one as, as it affects a certain category?
There's no place in the operating budget where you will see the grant number there. What we do is we actually pull out, it's mainly for staffing and some purchase services, we pull those expenditures out of the general operating budget and just budget for them under the grants. So, when you look at the staffing report, you're going to notice they make some notations there, that they're paid, these positions are paid from the grant. This is the grant that we're, I'm referring to in those notations.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Penny?
So, I guess I was actually looking at the grant number, too. So, if we look at page 78, and it talks about, or slide 66, it talks about total federal, state and federal grants, 3.2 million. How does that for fiscal year 2016? How much of that 3.2 million is in the operating budget for 1516, and how much of it is out? Because not we're gross budgeting for the special ed excess cost grant, so the 664,000 is in the, is in the operating budget, right? Because we're now gross budgeting that.
Right. Those two, the last two grants that are listed here are actually revenues to the town's general operating budget. So, they go directly to the town, they do not hit our books.
Why, no, but they're revenues-
To the town.
No, I under, yeah, no, I understand that, but we're, we're paying, in essence, we're budgeting for the 664,000 that the town is going to get back, so it's in our operating budget, and then the money gets returned to the town as-
Right. You're saying if we, if we went to net budgeting versus the gross budgeting, we would reduce our request by the 667.
I guess that's what I was wondering, is how much, if we were doing, was, is it just the 664, I think, this one, or 66-
664.
That we would reduce our budget by if we were doing, because we've previously done net budgeting, not gross budgeting. Is it, was it, is it just the 664, is it more than that?
No, if, if the same service needs and the same cost applied, it would be this number.
Right.
Yeah, that the budget would be reduced by.
664?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the other items, the 2.1, the, the rest of it in the 3.2 doesn't get reflected in our operating budget?
The 1.4 ECS, educational cost-sharing grant, as I understand it, has always gone directly to the town.
Okay.
And if we didn't have any of these other grants and had the needs, it would be in the operating budget as well. But these grants are specifically designed to take in these costs here.
All right. Okay.
Good.
Anyone else? Okay.
It's an awful lot of information. I'm sorry to put so much in front of you all at once, but this is, sometimes the best way to do it is to jump in the pool and start to swim, I guess. So, thank you for indulging me as we've gone through all of this. You know, I, the advantage of having a first read and a second read, you know, is that it gives you the opportunity to think about, reflect, ask questions. So, in the, in the two weeks ahead, if you have questions that may come up, certainly feel free, send them to me, send them to Deanna, and we will, depending upon the question, either bring it to the whole board on the 25th, or certainly we'll be glad to get back to you, you know, directly around all that. Yes, Sherri?
So, Brian, can you just mention, I mean, we do encourage our parents and community members to understand the budget, and you're going to be presenting the budget several more times over the next few weeks. Do you want to mention a couple of, like, the PTC meetings and the website and so forth?
Absolutely. The, and again, we transitioned last year to a new website, which gives us some features that we're able to take advantage of. Some of that includes streaming video and some other things. So, we are looking to use the website to both stream presentations such as this, but also to perhaps create shorter 10-minute videos or so hitting on some highlights around the budget and other things. So, that's one place, and that would all be housed in the budget link on the website. Tomorrow morning, I'll be at the joint meeting of the PTC over at East School, where we'll have a presentation from CAB and our Safety Committee, and then after the presentation, I'll have a few minutes to discuss the budget, certainly not the- Certainly not the two-plus hours we've done so far tonight. But a quick overview of some of the drivers and I'll be sure to take into consideration some of your feedback, you know, in that dialogue to share sort of the, you know, sort of the insurance driver and then the, the program enhancements. On the 20th, the morning of the 20th, I'll be going to, actually coming back here to share information with, combined meeting with Saks PTC and the new high school PFA. And we're also, I think, scheduling a safety committee meeting around that time, too. And then after that, I'll be going to the Board of Selectmen's meeting to share with them. The, certainly we're, we're going to be uploading our, the budget document in its entirety to the website and providing different updates for the community to be able to see and understand. I think that, again, this document is so well-laid out and so clear in its presentation that I think it really will help people to develop a deeper understanding than has been available before into, you know, our budgeting and the ways that we manage it. So always welcome questions and feedback.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no more questions, could I ask for someone to move to approve the superintendent's proposed budget for 2016?
For a first read?
For a first read, sorry, for a first read. Brendan? May I have a second? Sherri?
Good.
Okay, that's all we need for a first read.
Okay. So I think we'll invite our.
Wait, just for the purpose of the newspapers, it's a move to approve the budget that has a 2.4% operational ex-insurance increase.
Deal. Got that much?
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, Sherri, for that clarification.
Just wanted to make sure the headline's good tomorrow.
Very good. And I want to thank all of our, our building and district administrators for coming out tonight and sacrificing their own viewing of the Clemson Alabama game. At least the first quarter in order to be with us. Thank you all and Ron and our teachers as well. It's, it really is a group effort and it's wonderful to have the insight and support of all of our, all of our building administrators and folks. So thank you all. Enjoy the rest of the game.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So I guess we're moving on. When I let Dr. Lutzey come back up here before.
Mr. Rutter is calling up ahead.
I just want you to know, the whole board to know that Dr. Lutzey added all these things to the agenda at the last minute. There were a few additions.
To the agenda?
Yeah. So he's, he's punishing himself.
I think that this is probably how it happened.
Okay. So moving on, we have our Board of Education meeting schedule. It should be in the packet of information at your spot. And, you know, I don't know if Dr. Lutzey wants to say anything about the proposed additional meeting dates that we have.
I will, and you're probably tired of hearing my voice. But the, this is again for a first read. And on the 25th, we would look for a second read. We are, by the end of January, we are required to submit to Claudia the Board of Education meeting dates, as are all town bodies in New Canaan. When we did this last time, we covered up through the end of the school year. But because of the, the charter, the way that it's written, it doesn't, the request, they need to know our meeting dates actually in the calendar year, not in the, in the school year. So as we do each year, we need to add in a couple of extra dates. So the dates in red on the top sheet that you have, July, August, September. We talked a little bit about the August 15th and that that could be a tough day for a meeting. Or even a July meeting, those 11th or 18th, could be tricky. But what, the approach when we do this is to add them if there's a possibility that we would have the meeting, and it's, and then cancel them if we don't. It's much better to add them now and then cancel them than it is to try to add them later. Because by adding them later, they become a special meeting, which follows a different protocol. So if you look behind it, you see our two school calendars. And Tori's gone through and highlighted the meeting dates on the calendar, just so that it's clear. The, given the, the one piece, and it lasts this past year, we had shifted our dates in November and December so that we didn't have a Board of Education meeting right up against the, the holiday. This next year coming up, we actually have a full week of school prior to the holiday in 2016, which is the 1617 calendar. So you can see the three meeting dates, at least as the proposal in front of you now, in December. Because we do have school on that 23rd, it becomes a half-day. Okay. So as for a first reading, you're welcome to.
Does anybody have questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I mean, the three meetings in a row in November was definitely, I mean, it's just, it's a lot. I feel like three in a row in December is.
The middle one would be the budget workshop.
Right, no, I know.
Which, okay.
I know. I mean, I don't know. I mean, me personally, I would rather have three in November versus three in December. But that's just me. And I know the 28th is right after Thanksgiving. But I would, I mean, personally, I would prefer to have like the three, the 14th, the 7th, 14th, 21st. But that's just, that's just me. And maybe just cutting off that last December meeting, the 19th, not having that one. Oh, wait, sorry. Yeah.
I would agree. But if the budget workshop is December 12th, do we need the meeting on the 19th?
We make the budget workshop on the 5th then instead, right? You bump that up.
Or I just, I'm not sure you need that extra meeting on the 19th.
If you had three in the, in November, I don't know.
Yeah, I get, well, I guess the question becomes the, you know, if, does the budget workshop need to be an extra meeting? Or you could just have two each of the months and then designate one of the two to be the budget workshop, instead of it being an extra meeting, which is possible. Which is, you know, this, again, if we were to approve this as is, it wouldn't say budget workshop on the 12th, it would just be a meeting date. And one could always be removed from the calendar, you know, in, in time. So that's certainly worth a dialing.
Any other comments? Penny?
I guess I would just say that, I mean, having sat on the board for a number of years, we tend to need those meetings. And I would keep them, the three, the two meetings, the two regular meetings and the budget workshop in December. And if we can cancel one, when we get closer, cancel the 19th. That would be great. Or just have it be a really efficient meeting. I just, I know we pushed the administration before, but, you know, things come up and you just have to have those meetings. I think it's nice to have, I don't know, join the Saks Building Committee. We schedule them every two weeks. But I don't know. So I guess I would support, you know, we can all discuss it, but I would support having the two regular meetings and the budget workshop in December.
Well, and I would just, for what it's worth, recommend that, as you've mentioned, Penny, that it's, they can stay in there and as we approach the date, you know, we can look and see and make decisions as need be. Again, if we were to not have it here and then want, and then decide to add it in, it becomes a special agenda that has to be managed very differently. It's much more constraining than the meeting.
I guess I did have a question about having meetings set for July 11th and 18th. Did you discuss that and I missed it?
No, we haven't discussed it. I think this is the first, you know, discussion of, you know, the.
You're just one week apart. I did notice that. That didn't seem to.
It is not related to my vacation schedule.
But no, but that is, that's just the same thought process, right? I mean, we've always had those summer meetings scheduled. And then the chair will take a survey shortly before and find out who's available. And if not, if we don't have quorum, then we cancel.
Right. This past year, we had one meeting in July.
Really?
And the year before, I think we had one.
And one meeting in?
One in July and one in August is what we did last year.
One in July and one in August, okay.
Yep. Because the Monday before that is the 4th.
Right, okay.
But I think having the both, I agree originally with you, one, but I think having the two days, just because vacation schedules vary and we want to have the quorum, it's kind of good to get it on there and then decide later.
Yeah, strike one.
Yeah. Any other comments? So, well, just a second. Yeah. So I just, just so I'm clear, so I'm hopefully summarizing the view of the board is, you know, and correct me if I'm incorrect in the assumption. But, so, right now, are we leaning toward leaving the dates as, as scheduled and giving ourselves the flexibility to cancel should vacation schedules or the lack of need for the, the meetings arise? Okay, perfect. So may I have a motion to, let me get the exact wording here, move to approve the proposed Board of Ed meeting schedule dates for 2016 for first read. Sanghita?
So moved.
May I have a second? Hazel? Okay. So those, that's all we need for right now. All right. Moving on to the, we're going to go into the committee charters. We're going to start with the Board of Education Resources Committee revised charter. Brendan's the chair of that committee. And if you could present the charter.
Sure. The committee name as proposed is the Resources Committee. It's a change from the Educational Resources Committee. The charge is to advocate for and ensure the acquisition of the resources, financial, technological, facilities, transportation, staff, et cetera, required to improve student learning, to achieve the district's mission and vision, ensure district resources are utilized effectively and efficiently to maximize student achievement. The deliverables are A, to evaluate enrollment-related resources; B, study insurance costs and ensure that the board has the most efficient cost structure; C, review lease and other long-term agreements; D, evaluate and report on the current use of resources and future resource needs to promote an efficient cost structure; E, continue to work with key stakeholders to ensure transparent and efficient budgeting processes. The scope and composition, the committee will be comprised of at least three Board of Education members designated by the board chair in accordance with Article III, Section 5.1 of the BOE bylaws. They'll serve for a calendar year from appointment and the committee chair will be elected by the committee. Frequency of meeting is as needed. Reporting frequency is at least quarterly. And there's no authority independent of the full board. And then I think, beginning with this year, we're proposing it as a standing committee.
Yeah, because just, just so everybody's aware, this was a, this was a, it was a special committee for a year. And that's in the Board of Ed bylaws, you know, you need to be a special committee for a year before it can transition to a standing committee. So we've had it for a year and would be transitioning. All right, nice job. Any question? Does anyone, have any questions for Brendan or the committee before we move to bring this in as a first read? May I have a motion to approve the Board of Ed Resources Committee as a standing committee for a term of up to three years as a first read? Jen? And may I have a second? Penny? Okay. Moving on to the Communications Committee. Sherri?
I think we should move to, change the name to the Award Winning Communications Committee.
A lot of pressure on you.
I'm sorry. It's been a long meeting. A little, a little lovey there is good. No, just the history on this committee. It was formed in December of 2013 as a special committee. It was converted last year on January 20th of 2015, was converted to a standing committee for a term of up to three years. So we're just looking to renew that status as a standing committee. And the charter, you can see here, we've updated the deliverables to reflect the work that, that we've progressed. And everything else is the same.
Okay. Any questions for Sherri of the committee? Penny?
I'm sorry, I didn't check our bylaws. But since we approved it as a standing committee for three years.
The language has changed. We're, they're modifying the language within the charter. So we need to just approve it. It's still going to be a three-year standing committee, but they've modified some of the language within the documents.
So we're in our second of our, of our.
Revised, sorry. Yeah, if you look at the language on the approval, it's move to approve the revised charter.
Okay, as revised, okay.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve the revised. Hazel?
Yes.
And second? Penny? Okay, so that's first read on the Communications Committee. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the Governance Committee. And that's Tom as the chair. And if you could go through the.
I'll do the reach, certainly. The name of this special committee is the Board of Education Governance Committee. The charge is to review and recommend bylaw and policy changes as necessary to the Board of Education. The deliverables are the, the committee will review existing bylaws and policies. The committee will work with district administrators and CAB on the development of updated bylaws and policy and present those updates to the full board for approval. And the committee will be responsible for bylaws and policies that are in compliance with state mandates and accurately reflect the values of the New Canaan public school system. The scope and composition, the committee shall be comprised of at least two Board of Education members designated by the board chair in accordance with Article III, Section 5.1 of the BOE bylaws. They will serve for one calendar year from appointment. The committee will elect a chair. The committee will complete a review and update of BOE bylaws and review and initiate policy updates. Meeting frequency, at least monthly. Reporting frequency, at least quarterly. The committee has no authority independent of the full board. And the final, final deliverable end date will be full communication plan as outlined above at year end. And that's it.
All right. Does anyone have any questions about the Governance Committee as a special committee? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Penny?
No, I don't have that. I actually do have a question about the Communications Committee. I'm sorry I didn't think about it. Because I wanted to have an award, I wanted to have an award-winning charter as well. And so the only thing I was wondering is, and I know I, I think that I had suggested this language previously, that the members of the committees be designated in accordance with Article III, Section 5.1. And that's not, so that is what we have, I haven't, didn't actually check this previously and then check our charter. But that's what we have in the Strategic Planning and the Resources Committee. And that's not the language, I think because it's a little bit older charter in the Communications Committee. I was just thinking if we were going to update the language, maybe we could look at updating that language as well. So it matches the two other committees. And I imagine that that committee also elects its own chair. I'm just not sure.
I think you've brought that, yeah. I think that's a common, you know.
I'm actually just noticing that resources and governance say two different things. So we should probably look at that across all of these.
So I can, I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, we'll just make sure that the language is consistent with, with each. Okay, that's, that's good.
Sure. I'd be glad to take that back.
Okay. All right.
I have a question as for the governance. Because we, before, was it a, because this is a special committee and not a standing committee for this?
Yeah, because it, when, when it wasn't an official, there was not an official governance charter. So because there was no official charter, we have to have it as a special committee for one year. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm, I am now, just so everybody's clear, we are talking about governance. And I am looking for a motion to approve the Board of Ed Governance Committee as a special committee for a term of up to one year. Sherri? May I have a second? Jen? Okay, thank you. And that was for a first read as well. Okay, Strategic Planning.
Strategic Planning Committee was established the past year. And we had a timeline which we had to extend and so to be a little flexible with other pertinent matters that we had to be dealt with. And so we had to adjust the timeline. So we're still looking at it to be a special committee because we do have some specific deliverables. And then having to look again to see then whether you want to continue on for the standing committee or, or change it. But our charge was basically, again, to remind everyone to assist the Board of Ed to develop and implement a long-term vision for the New Canaan Public Schools as a sustainable, high-performing school district. This includes identifying a process to develop the vision and plan for the district, creating a timetable for the process that includes regular board updates and frequent opportunities for engagement and developing a budget to support the process and its implementation. So the deliverables for the first year, we started working on some of it and we're going to continue on to finish it off at the end of this school year. But process plan, identifying stakeholders, data collection requirements, identifying the process for that plan, developing the timetable and then researching best practices that we will be bringing back to share with the Board of Ed members. And then second year, really developing the metrics around those, the, what has been articulated as the vision. And then develop a timeline plan for, and budget for implementation of that vis, of that vision. So our final end date is to present the Board of Ed long-term vision, which we will develop with the Board of Ed members by November 2017, where the whole plan and the metrics, everything will be developed. So the first year, so even though it says it's just for a term of one year, the end of deliverables actually. of deliverables actually will go until 2017, so I'm not sure if that, that's accurate.
Okay. Any questions for the committee? Okay, then, may I have a motion to approve for a first read the Board of Education Strategic Planning Committee as a special committee for a term of one year? Maria? May I have a second? Jen? Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do you, just may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Hazel? May I have a second? Penny? May I, all those in favor? That's unanimous? All right, any opposed? Okay, thanks. All right. Comments from the public? Anyone want to make a comment? All right, thank you. And announcements in future, future meetings. Dr. Lutze?
Sure, so on the 25th, we will be doing our second readings and voting on essentially the agenda that you have in front of you from tonight. We have our, was our first reading of the budget, the Board of Ed meetings, and then certain, and all of these subcommittees. We'll also be sharing a statement of accounts for December, going through some of those numbers. But really, significantly, we'll have, again, Joe Spurgeon will be here, will be here looking at the budget document in detail, and really going through and, and having an open dialogue about that. We also hope to have that, that sports procedure for you to take a look at, that had been shared a few weeks ago, that discusses sort of a process for people to take club or other activity, kind of sports, through in order to seek, if they seek to gain sort of standing in the school. So we're looking to have that as well. So hopefully there won't be any, well, I know there won't be any college football games on, because it will likely be a long evening as well, so, but it will be chock-full of good discussion, I'm sure.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much, and to expedite the closing, may I have a motion to adjourn? Hazel? May I have a second? Penny? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, motion, meeting adjourned. Thank you.